Which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Not used to this seat. Okay, good morning and welcome to the March 19th, 2020 Board of Selectmen's meeting. On the agenda, we have action items. We will be updating the actions that have been taken and probably will be taking in response to COVID-19. Jeff, you want to take the lead on this, please, because you are the...
Sure. Police, fire, as we are today, police, fire, DPW, water, sewer, water, health and transfer station, and facility maintenance are continuing operations unabated. Senior Center continues to provide services to seniors, including delivery meals. The center has been blessed with many donations of food for distribution to the community. Two media platforms have been established to hold remote meetings and teleconferences. All remote meetings will have to be held in the Board of Selectmen's chamber due to broadcast sound issues at the center office building. There's been no guidance to date on the provision of wholesale relief, late access tax bills or other bills issued by the town. There are internal actions that can be taken by the collector treasurer that can provide some relief until we get guidance. The town has not received any information that expenses other than those directly related to providing response to COVID-19 would be reimbursed. These expenses would be medical expenses for equipment, payroll hours, and consumable products for responders. However, all expenses related to the town's response are being tracked. The tennis and basketball courts and playgrounds are closed. We got to get some locks. That'll be done today. We have prepared the necessary notices and postings for holding remote meetings. The planning board meeting is set with these legal notices. The Conservation Commission scheduled for April 7th will need to have some new notices prepared to be consistent with the necessary legal provisions for virtual or remote meetings. Some employees are already working from home due to caring for a family member, or they chose to. There is legislation moving through the state which would provide relief to towns and cities. Staff is monitoring the status. With the equipment supplies we have, approximately 12 people can work from off-site. This means they have full access to their computers at work and the town's computer network. Daily messaging to the community will be taking place. Andrea Mensson and Kevin Filczek will be providing new information each weekday and on weekends as necessary. Fieldwork continues to the extent inspectors feel comfortable. Some inspections are done by the contractor, providing pictures or engineering certifications. That's where we are this morning.
Okay. Linda, would you like to address the audience first, please? Okay. Where is the mic there? Okay, just introduce yourself, please.
Hi, Linda Kokalas, Chair of the Board of Health. I also have on the telephone Dr. Lewis Faison. He is consulting with us. He's a medical doctor and he's also a PhD in public health. Anyway, he's on the phone. You can't see him, but he's here, listening. And if you have direct questions, you know, feel free to contact him.
Now, he's a member of the Board of Health.
No, that's Dr... No, that's a different doctor. This is Dr. Faison, who's basically consulting to us. George Debusk is our doctor on the Board of Health. And George is, I would say, pretty... He works for UMass right now. So he's very, very, very busy. So Dr. Faison's retired and is willing to lend a hand to us, so...
Okay. Thank you, Doctor.
So, the Board of Health has taken... We're working... I shouldn't say taken. We're actually working with Leslie at the Senior Center. We wanted to talk to her about the vulnerable populations. It looks like she's got a really good handle on it. We also have a network of public health nurses that we worked with during the H1N1. I reached back out to them. They're all willing to pitch in and help. They're working from home. So, any phone calls, anything that people have concerns about, medication or whatever, you know, if they can't get ahold of their primary physician, you know, these are all medical nurses. And Dr. Faison and his wife are also doctors. They'd be willing to also talk to people. I think it's important because if people are sheltering in place in their homes because they're part of the vulnerable population, that they still have people communicating with them so that they don't have loneliness and other things set in as far as depression. So this way, people can reach out to them, see how they're doing and so forth. So I know Leslie's group is doing that, but they're also doing Meals on Wheels and other things. So we have other volunteers that are willing to reach out, which I think is important if they need groceries or their medication. We also have shut down, made sure that the facilities around town, such as the movie theater, weren't open. We sent a letter to their corporate office to let them know because they needed a letter from us for their insurance company. The tattoo festival, which was supposed to be in a couple of weeks, we actually canceled it prior to the other announcements just because we kind of foresaw that this was going to get very, very busy. And, you know, our resources would become low during this time. So they self-canceled, which is fine. We're talking to some of the daycares and now the governor put out another... Directive, yeah, thanks. Another directive in regards to the daycare centers because parents wanted to pull some of their kids out of the daycares. And daycares were saying, geez, you're not giving us two weeks' notice. So there were some issues there. We resolved that. We also resolved some other issues where some of the elderly folks that live in one of the complexes had HVAC going on, where they really didn't want to have people coming into their apartments. So we also handled that. So... And there are a couple of other things that you could think of that we were... Oh, we're working with all the restaurants. So the restaurants, because of the directive from the governor now. We were going to do this, but he did it for us. Takeout and pickup. So I would say a good majority of our restaurants are pursuing that right now. And I'd really like to see the public go out and support our local restaurants because it's important. A lot of them are going to do it for... They want to see how it goes for about a week. And if it's not feasible for them to stay open, they probably won't be. So we're encouraging our restaurants and people in town to go there. You can get breakfast, lunch, and dinner. A lot of people are getting breakfast, lunch, and dinner at different places. So we want to encourage them. We will put a list of all the restaurants.
Oh, I was going... That's what I was going to ask, if we could get a list...
Yeah, so we're going to put a list of all... It's already up. Okay, good. Yeah, so we talked about... So the list of all the restaurants that are doing this are... Trying to stay away from you. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. That's good. That's good. That's good.
Is it on the health board?
Yeah, so is it going to be on the homepage?
Actually, Kevin has it through the Kevin Development. So that was him yesterday. He was looking to put that out. So I hope you get that posted. And I think it's up already.
The Regional Chamber actually did it too, as well.
Oh, good. Other... It looks like the grocery stores. I know a lot of people already know about it, but we were going to post some of the information that we're getting because we're also working with the grocery stores. We had closed down all of the... What do you call it? The self-serving type of...
Prepared food.
Prepared food, yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Any service bars.
Yeah, so that's all shut down to the public, so no one's handling stuff. Our other recommendations would be, you know, social distancing is key. Hand sanitation, to make sure you wash your hands frequently and often. If you can't wash your hands, you know, to use like Purell or whatever, might be sufficient. But washing your hands is the ultimate. So soap and water, good old soap and water. The other recommendations that we're seeing down from the CDC that they probably haven't adopted yet in Massachusetts, but every day it's a moving target with CDC on how many people. Right now, the state has 25 or less. CDC's recommendation is now 10 or less. So the Board of Health wants to go with the CDC recommendation right now of 10 or less people. Because the state will... They'll probably finally adopt that. So we're going to follow the CDC and NIH guidelines. Trying to think of anything else. Right now, we're understanding from the state that they will have one hospital right now. This is what I'm hearing, designate it as a coronavirus hospital near Boston. And they're going to probably start doing some drive-throughs. We don't have the information of where the drive-throughs are going to be yet or how close we'll be to the town of Sturbridge. But they'll be able to eventually start doing drive-through testing. And then when we get the test results, I'm sure that it'll go through the Maven system. So we'll be notified by the Board of Health of if there's a... If someone had actually had a positive test in Sturbridge. Right now, we absolutely have nothing that we know of here. But I'm going to let the public know that because there's not a ton of testing going on throughout the state, I would say you have to assume that it's already here. Okay? That somebody in town already has this. I don't want to give anyone a false hope of start posting how many people in town have it that have been confirmed because, like I said, there's not enough testing going on. We can post that information. I was asked by a selectman, Mary Dowling, if we would be able to start posting three confirmed cases, two confirmed cases, or however many. We're happy to do that. It's... We're allowed to do that. I just don't want people to think that there's only three cases here. They really have to understand that there may be a lot more that are people that are asymptomatic. That's a big concern that we do have, are people that are asymptomatic, that are going about their business as usual and not understanding that they are endangering our most vulnerable populations in town. And so this is all hands. Everybody has to work to flatten this out. It's everybody's responsibility to make sure that you're social distancing. And just because the children are out of school right now, this isn't a time for them to all start hanging out at somebody's house to playing video games. Because unfortunately, they also can get it. A lot of the people who are... People think that only the elderly are dying from this, and that's not true. There are people who are much younger also getting this and having serious complications. With all the children right now, younger generations that have been vaping, they actually are very vulnerable to this. They need to understand that. We're trying to get that message out so the millennials and the younger generations, they can help save their grandparents, truly. So they all have a part to play and everyone needs to think that way. I don't know...
Any questions from the board?
Hi. Good morning. Dr. Faison here. Pleased to speak with you all. And I just wanted to add that I'm very supportive of the way Linda has presented today and the work that she's doing through the Board of Health, as Ken lately as well. So I think she's moving right along, very energetic in pursuit of this here in Sturbridge. I just am concerned a little bit about posting numbers because it wouldn't change really any recommendations. And the recommendations stand as they are, and they're very clear, I think. And I think it would kind of confuse people, like what is... Why are the recommendations where they are? There may be only a few cases right now that are reported due to very limited testing. So it just seems best to stick with these recommendations of social distancing and all the personal hygiene that's recommended. And then follow statewide information. People from towns work in different parts of the state or travel in different parts. So we're really pretty similar to statewide information. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions, Mary?
I may as well. Hi, Doctor. Thank you. And I agree. I think our Board of Health is doing a very good job. Linda is on top of it and she's answered a lot of my questions. I'm just going to, for a different reason, respectfully still state that I think transparency is necessary as an elected official. The majority of town websites that I've pursued are letting their residents know if there's confirmed cases, presumed positive. I know the state does give the breakdown by county. So they've been following Worcester County. And I know it shouldn't give a false sense of security. I'm not doing it for that reason. I'm doing it for absolutely the opposite because there's a lot of people that think, oh, it's not around here. So when we get a case, they need to know. I mean, they've learned about cases in Southbridge. They've learned what's going on in Charlton. And there's a lot of towns in Worcester County. And I get a lot of questions from residents wanting to be informed. And they're wondering if other towns are putting their residents on notice, not to be less vigilant, but in fact, to be more vigilant. That would be my reason. And to know ultimately where there is a hotspot. I mean, that's how they're finding that out. I know Boston Public Health Commission posts, if not daily, I check it. They let the city... The residents of Boston know how many new cases are going into Boston. So, I mean, I do... I do feel that it's the kind of information that when people go on our website, they want to know. With all the disclaimers, you still need to social distance. If you're sick, you stay home for 14 days. And all of the above. They're all watching the news, but they still want to know what is going on in their own town.
There will be people that have it that won't be tested also.
Of course. They know that. But if there is a confirmed case, I respect what the other towns are doing, the other boards of health, when they put their residents on notice. And I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I feel strongly about that. I think it will make them more careful, not less careful. Because all they're looking at right now is the numbers in Worcester County. And they're saying, well, they're not as bad as Middlesex. They're not as bad as Suffolk.
Mary, Dr. Faison had...
It would go... It would do the opposite. And, you know, I do have, you know...
The other concern...
Doctors in my family that feel like... You know, I guess maybe the medical profession is split on that because others want people to know when it hits... When it hits home.
I think when they do... When they get a lot more testing out there, you'll actually have better numbers right now. I don't think we have great numbers because there's not a lot of testing. And it's very limited testing. And a lot of people that want to get tested can't get tested.
Here's the thing. I don't think it's bad right now that you say there's none because people are going to be careful. But when there are positive cases, I think they should know because there's elderly that may say, okay, there's five cases in Sturbridge. I'm not even going beyond my doorstep.
Mary, the other concern that we have too is this. Because we are kind of a transient community where a lot of people stop by here, go to Cracker Barrel, and then they head on to Springfield or somewhere else. So we could have a positive case, say that shows up in Springfield, Mass. But they... At the Cracker Barrel, they were there on Sunday. But we won't know that. We're not going to be notified that somebody in town had it and now they're in Springfield, Mass.
Oh, I get it. But that's under-reporting. I get that, that there's cases that are going to be present in Sturbridge and they've moved on. That is like under-reporting. I get that. I want people to be careful. I'm saying, when we have confirmed cases... For example, what if there was a confirmed case hypothetically in the town hall? I think it should be... It should be on our website. Southbridge did it. One is under investigation. One is confirmed. One is presumed positive. And there's other towns that are doing it. That's what's on their website right now. So I... I don't know how others feel.
I agree with Selectman Dowling.
Yeah.
I agree. I agree with Selectman Dowling because one thing that I've seen on the community page on Facebook is the message isn't getting to everybody. And just two days ago, there was a posting for folks wanting to know that if their young ones were attending any other children's birthday parties and what were they doing in light of what was going on. To me, that message hasn't been received yet. It hasn't. And for whatever reason. It doesn't mean that the message isn't been provided, but somehow, I don't know how you reach that age group that isn't quite into it. And it could be because, like you said, they feel just the seniors are going to get it. But now they're finding that's not true anymore, as you said. And somehow, I don't know how you get the word out. But we have to get that word out, that every single human being is susceptible.
Well...
Some more than others. I agree. Some more, much more than others.
I would say then, if somebody doesn't care or they're not afraid of this, they're actually jeopardizing everyone else. And I tell you to stay away from people like that, absolutely 100%.
But that social media, as good as it is, can be damaging too. Because if people are saying, you know, oh, well, we did this, we did that, if there's no contact with anybody, that's a fine thing. But if they're trying to get, like you said, play groups or whatever, that can be tough.
It's going to get boring because people are home with their kids and everything else. But I would say if you can stay within your own pod, your own family unit, and not socialize outside of your... I mean, it's going to be hard. But with Facebook and with video conferencing or calling or video chat, they have other ways to communicate now that we wouldn't have had when we were growing up. So they have... They're kind of lucky in that way. A lot... I do have concern, like I said, for our elderly population. Not everybody has the internet. Not everyone has the capability of doing this. So I think having volunteers reach out, saying, hey, how you doing today, John? How you feeling? You know? How... You know, whatever it is, just to make... I would say a feel-good thing, to make sure people know that someone cares about them and they're not shut out from the rest of the world. I think the police chief and the other folks, they probably have a good idea based on calls and where they go also. And I know that they also work with Tri Valley and also with the Senior Center. So they probably also have a really good idea of who these people are. We need to know who they are so that we can make sure that they're all sequestering themselves to their own place. And not having unnecessary people also coming into their homes, having maybe one family member come visit them, not multiple people coming there on a regular basis. So the less contact they have with... They want to have the... What am I trying to say here? They don't want to have a lot of contact with multiple people at the same time. They want to be able to have contact with maybe one person in a family member who would take over to make sure that they are okay, they needed food and things like that, so...
But Linda, to get back to Mary's point though, I think it's a valid point that, you know, with all the warnings on TV, newspaper, everything else people are getting, people are still rather blasé about it. So it's a little scarier if people can read this, you know, positive or...
I could see it both ways. So I'm not opposed to doing it. And I don't think anybody is...
What do you think? I'll ask the health agent.
Yeah, go ahead.
What is your take on that?
My personal feeling?
Yes. How you feel as a health agent?
My professionals have said that it's not a great idea to do this. We've had discussions about this. And either way, at this point, I don't think it's going to be too much of a difference. Us posting isn't going to do a lot right now. The issue is, how do you get it out there and let them know it's here? Because the bigger question is, what if we keep reporting zero because of the testing and it's here? So if I keep putting zero up, should we put one up? Should we put five up and under... So what if there's nothing being tested? What if we don't have it here, but we know it's here? It's in Southbridge, which makes it here.
Okay. Can I address that?
Mary?
Exactly right. People know it's in Southbridge because they took a different approach than what... And we have this discussion and we said we're probably going to butt heads on it. I mean, we know it's in Southbridge, exactly right, because that Board of Health posted. And I really feel strongly, it's not about putting up zero. It is not about giving a false sense of security. You could put up, there are zero presum... There are zero cases right now. However, we strongly believe that the germ is... The virus disease, COVID-19, is already in Sturbridge. We have a transit... And you can give all the reasons. It is not to make people feel good that there's zero. That is not my point at all. It's the flip side of the coin. When there are cases, I don't think the Board of Health... And I'm not saying this is your position now. I don't think the Board of Health has the right to withhold that information from either the elected officials or the public. So I want to be able to call. I don't think you can say, heaven forbid, let's say there were 10 cases. There is no way that the Board of Health should be withholding that kind of information from the residents. And I'm not saying you're going to do it. But again, I'm not about posting that there's zero cases. I'm about posting what Southbridge did and what other communities have done and what the city of Boston does on a daily basis. They tell residents what the numbers are. Now, the public, the state, is only doing it by county, of course, because they are busy. That's a lot more paperwork for them to go through every single town in Middlesex and every single town and give the breakdown. So they're doing what they can reasonably do without creating a lot of red tape, which is doing the breakdown by county. But if our Board of Health has knowledge that we have five cases or 10 cases, that's how we found out about Neuroshell being a hotspot. We have a right to know and it should be a one-line thing. There are four cases. And you know what? The next few weeks are critical with that whole bell curve. I'm not saying in six months, that's going to be the approach. I don't know. But right now, that is the number one question people are asking. And they're not asking it to be secure. They're asking because they're worried. It's in Southbridge. How many does Sturbridge have? And I do not want to say, I don't know, because the Board of Health doesn't tell us. I mean, that is not a good...
All right, Mary. Mary, I'll...
So I know, I think we just have to...
Wait a minute. Wait a minute.
I think we have to decide because we kind of got off subject. And this was really never resolved. Are we going to post if there's confirmed cases or not? And if not, when I learn about it, I'm going to tell the people that I know. Because I don't think... I think transparency is very important.
I don't think that... Go ahead.
Ken?
And I want to say this, Mary. You've known everything I've known.
Right, because I came in and cried. I know. But we had this discussion when I said, I want the public to know if there is a case. And you... We agreed that we were not on the same page. So now I'm asking, what is going to be the policy of the board? And if you want to tell a public... An elected official and we post it separately, we'll do that. But I like the practice in the other towns that are posting, at least in the short term. You know, there's...
I don't have a problem posting. I mean, I'll just say it right there. I do not have a problem posting it. I just, like I said, we want to make sure it doesn't give people any kind of false sense of security. Only because of our transientness that we have a lot of people coming and going. The people in Southbridge and Charlton shop in Sturbridge. They play with the same kids in Sturbridge, okay? They also do a lot of other things in Sturbridge.
I get it. You don't have to put that there's zero cases. But when there is a case, it's the flip side that I want. I'm not...
That's not a problem.
It's the flip side.
Well, then, if there's no problems, Linda, if there's no problem...
I don't want to post up there that there's zero, though. And I would post when we do.
Linda, hold on a second. If there is a case that's been confirmed, that should be posted.
We have no problem with that.
Okay.
Okay. So it's a done deal. It's a done deal. It'll be posted. When we have something, we'll put it up there. I just don't want to put up there zero and then have a timed thing.
No.
Okay. So if this...
When we get something, we'll let everybody know.
Speaking of the drive-through testing, I know they're setting up a place in...
Shrewsbury.
Shrewsbury, one of the packing lots.
CVS.
CVS, yeah. And then they had listed a few others. Okay, any other questions, Mike?
Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Okay. You know, I'm glad to hear that there will be some public notification. I know it's not legally required. The Board of Health could, you know, under the public health laws of the Commonwealth, not disclose this information. But I appreciate if the Board does that with the qualifier. The thing that I'm more concerned about notification is to protect our employees, to make sure there's a good line of communication when the Board does get notified, that our EMTs and police and firefighters are notified promptly. And that's my biggest concern about notification is I want to make sure that they know the address and nature of anybody that's presumptive or confirmed.
Yeah, that's part of the... Michael, that's part of the whole... When we have a confirmed case, they're going to be notified in case they were in contact with them. So we have a protocol.
I'll tell you this. The directive just came down this morning that allows us to notify the first responders of the address. So that is changed this morning.
Yeah, things change daily, so...
That's already happening and already going to be working through.
But that even made me happier when I saw that one.
Yeah. Yeah. And on our side, standing with that, that was the discussion that Mary and I had in the stuff. We're bound by a variety of regulations. Now, if that's been lifted, we're allowed to give out that address. We're still not allowed to give out names or numbers or whatever else. We can just record a positive, a positive case at said address. And that can go to the, to the EMTs, to the fire and police, so they know if they're going in there, what they're working with. But that was a change that happened. It literally came in my email this morning.
So.
Do they, do police and fire have sufficient PPE?
I think they do, but that's not a question.
Yeah, we'll.
We'll ask them later.
We'll get to that.
So there, I mean, we could talk about this, too. I wanted to bring up the fact that there is, throughout the whole state, throughout every single town, we're getting requests for, "Do we have any extra masks at gallons, face shields, and everything like that?" Every single person in town right now, there isn't enough for everybody. So they have to kinda prioritize who gets what right now. We have a very limited supply. If we're not gonna be using them with direct contact with people, we could actually give up what our supply is to these folks if they need it.
How short are we?
Everybody is short, Mary. Nobody can get it.
No, I get it. But I mean, like, 50 percent, like.
Well, no, it's.
You have what you would have ordinarily. You just don't have.
We don't have, we don't have a stockpile. We have enough to run our EDS site if we need to do shots or inoculations. That's what we're geared for, is to open up a dispensary site.
Yeah, so that's all we have for now.
And when, when do we think, I know this is all fluid and it's dated.
We don't know.
But we don't know.
I have no idea, no idea. Right now, the feds are actually getting people to manufacture under, under the federal guidelines. So they're actually going to take over manufacturing of masks and other things like that that they need to do.
Priscilla?
I just wanna say that we need to be careful on how we present all these things. The last thing we wanna do today is create a panic, anywhere, anywhere, especially in our own community. I think what this purpose is today, I believe Selectman Mandaling, so rightly so called for this meeting, is information, for us to have information and to disseminate to the public. But I think we have to be gentler and honest, to be honest, obviously, but a little bit more of a gentle approach. We don't want people thinking that everybody needs a face mask today.
No, I'm talking about, we're talking about our.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. I'm not done.
Personal protection.
Yeah, but I'm not done. The, we don't want people to think they have to do, that's what happened to every pharmacy. That's what happened to every retail store. That's what happened everywhere when people went running for the sanitizers. And now they're like a commodity that you'll never see again almost. We can't do that. We can't do that to our community. You don't want them to think that if you don't have a face mask. I think when the fire chief comes, he can address that. If it comes, it just, I just wanna be careful because I don't want any, people are panicked already. People are nervous, and they should be. I get, I get it. But you don't want 'em panicked. It's not in anybody's best.
So we're talking about when we're working with the, when we're working with the EMTs, and they need additional stuff because they are actually on the front line. I'm not talking about the general public who are quarantining in their homes. They don't need face masks, absolutely.
From what I understand.
It doesn't help anyway.
There is requests being put out by our state medical people, asking for things.
I get it.
And if we can provide, if our Board with the 10 masks that we have, okay, can provide these guys with an additional two days, then we're happy to do that.
Can we hear from the police and fire about their supplies? Because I think that's gonna answer a lot of questions.
Yeah, that's what I'd rather do.
Please.
We.
Oh, yeah, no.
I think, I think PPE has been addressed.
For the doc. Treatment-related question, yeah, for one, the three of you here. Because the other question that I get is, I appreciated Mary saying there's one in Shrewsbury, and I know we talked about, but they're asking, and I know you're probably not gonna be able to answer this, I know you won't with any certainty, but your guesstimate is like better than what mine is. So the question is, when and where do we think the nearest to our town drive-by will end up going, if you know? I know there's one in Shrewsbury, but they're asking that. And then the other question is, I know, from what I understand, they call their own primary, their own internist, you know, give the symptoms, like telemedical, and then they'll be sent somewhere, et cetera. But they're asking, where do they think they would be sent? And my answer is, I don't know. It's gonna be up to where your primary tells you, if you're a candidate, to go get testing. But those are the kinda questions that I'm getting. Like, in Sturbridge, where most likely would they be sent? Harrington, kinda the logistics.
Well, so, so I think, I think the hospitals that are now, Harrington's run by UMass now, so, so I think they are gonna be making those deciding things. They're already doing a lot of this stuff ahead of the game, Mary. So we can't say, "Oh, you'll probably wind up here, or you'll probably wind up there." They may develop their own coronavirus hospital, just like they're doing in other areas. That's actually a recommendation that's coming out of Italy, to do that, if you can.
Right.
That way, if you broke your leg, you're not gonna be in the same hospital with the guy that has coronavirus. They're trying to do the same thing with ambulances, okay? That you have a coronavirus ambulance versus, that way you can save on the personal protection equipment, okay? When they call in to dispatch, they say, "Well, you broke your leg, but do you have any of these other symptoms?" This is what, this is like the lessons learned that they're doing in Italy that we're getting here.
Just as a practical matter, you know, they hear about the Cape now has the, and they wanna know what's happening in our little neck of the woods. That's what they wanna know.
But I think the fire chief is the one that's gonna tell us. But the thing, the thing is, we don't know.
I know, that's what I tell people. But I figure I'd ask the questions.
Yeah, but to sit here and try to guess.
I think Dr. Faison has actually sat in some of these medical calls. Dr. Faison, can you address this?
I'd like to give Dr. Faison, but I also have Dr. Faison, actually, Doc, can you hold up one second?
To me, to add that there is a priority now that the state Health Department has, the DPA, has a priority of who is the highest priority for testing. And it really is much more focused on people in hospitals, both patients and staff, people who work in hospitals, primary, people who may have attended, patients brought in, emergency medical, emergency EMT, and also very vulnerable populations, people with severe disabilities and so forth. So right now, most people who, they have symptoms of COVID-19 or flu, which overlap with each other, are requested to stay home. And there is, there's no testing for them at this time. Just stay home, take care of yourself. And of course, if you get sicker, of course, then to call your physician, your family doctor. And if you're very sick, to call 911. But let them know that you are sick with a condition that could be coronavirus. So they're prepared with masks and so forth as they come to the house. So most people, 80% of people are not gonna have to go to the hospital, especially in the older population. Even the older population, 80% can be treated at home without a diagnosis, a specific diagnosis. They're sick. And we do the same thing you would do for sick people, is to isolate them at home, take care of them, make sure they're fed and supported. But it's going to be treated at home like a bad flu. It's the normal isolation that we're requesting of people, without testing right now. We just can't test everybody. So there's a real priority of who gets tested. And the physician certainly can make those decisions and try those people into testing. But even local physicians have to go by this, that priority by the DPH.
Thank you. Keep up listening. I think that was very useful to hear from him.
There's also, just so you know, also, and you guys probably read about that the governor had also, the local boards of health had put out $5 million. There's more coming for us to be able to support this. And so I'm sure that if we needed things, and we could get them, we'll be able to start putting together things that we need, expenses and things like that.
I requested one in yesterday.
Okay, we put in a request yesterday.
Okay, Ken?
So this was put together by Dr. Faison for us, and this is going up on our website today. And this is sort of a common questions. I think that's something what Mary sort of, were you adding?
Awesome, yes.
So we got in yesterday. And you can work through this. It's going up on the webpage. I can probably get it a couple places. It'll be on our site for sure. And I could probably get in some other part of it. It addresses, I think, a lot of the basic questions. What do healthy people do or worry about? And if you wanna take a second read through and ask some questions, Dr. Faison's here. But this, I think this is kind of comprehensive of how, just how to deal with coronavirus and maybe put people at ease. We're hoping this helps on some side, on the ease part.
Well, the information, you know, these are the common questions. Also, the ARP has a phone number to call for people who have questions. Do you have that phone number that you could put on your site?
I can get that phone number up on the site.
Okay, I do have it. I can give it to you.
Yeah, before, okay.
Before you leave.
That'd be fantastic, yep.
Okay. And then, this isn't quite the health part, but United Way Community Economic Relief Fund, people can inquire of that for food, rent, things like that. Do you have a small piece of paper? Never mind, no, I can do it here.
Um, I, I think you guys may have addressed this earlier about being able to set up bridge-type conference calls and things like that.
We've set that up, so we'll give Ken the instructions on how to use it.
So, so that way, we can actually continue to, the other thing that I saw in the directive is that the selectmen will have the ability to change what they consider a quorum for the boards. I think I sent, I sent it to you, Mary?
Did, yes.
Because I don't know who, I don't have, and I think I also sent it to Jeff, too. So every time I get information, guys, I'm trying to send it out to you all so that you're aware of what I'm aware about.
Is it easier for you to just send it to Jeff?
I could just send it to Jeff, and then if Jeff wants to.
Yeah, Jeff.
If you've noticed, the last two days, whatever, I don't even read it, I just send it to you.
I would like that. Anything that you send to him, I would like forwarded. And maybe that just alleviates you having to do it. But I, you know, some of the stuff, we don't, we personally don't need to know, but I'd rather have too much information rather than not enough.
Yes, I mean, I'd be happy to do that.
That's fine, absolutely.
And then Jeff can.
I firmly believe in one point of contact for any information.
It's easier that way.
One voice.
This is, yeah, one, one thing on how, how fast things are changing. At 3:40, 3:35 yesterday, we posted a notice on virtual meetings. And I think your recommendation today, in, it says, it refers to Charlie Baker's 25 persons per meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So should we mod, would it be the recommendation that we reference the CDC and NIH?
I believe so, only because it's gonna be a moving target. And I don't know if the state's gonna keep changing it, because it went from 2:50 to, did they go to 10? No?
Baker had a news conference yesterday at some point, changing.
Oh, so see, so we're, if CDC's faster than the state, then we're gonna, we're gonna follow whoever's moving along fastest, so.
But I'm gonna ask you to adopt this today. It's posted, but I would like you to adopt it so it's policy, and we'll change it to 10.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure that the Board of Health was still recommending 10.
The Board of Health also, like, so like.
And that's how fast it changes, every 12 hours.
Let one person speak at a time. Mike was talking, so I'll let him get his point.
The 10, the 10, yes, 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 10.
So when we get to that, we'll.
Correct, that's correct.
We'll look at 10 rather than 25.
The other recommendation that we are actually doing within our own board is our administrative assistant is working from home right now. She's got a project to work on. If need be, we can have our phones forwarded to her. Or we will be taking, the phones could be forwarded to me. Or worst-case scenario, we could change our message on our recording that says, "How to get in contact with the Board of Health. Please call this number." Because we don't feel like it's really necessary if she can work from home, opposed to coming to an office to look at email and so forth. And you can do that remotely. We're saying, is, if you can work remotely, then work remotely. There's some people that won't be able to. I understand that. We're putting all perks off right now. So all perk testing, anything that has to do with the septic system, until we get a better handle of what's going on here, if Ken can fit something in. But we're not prioritizing that right now. So we have other priorities. Just so you all know and the public knows, if there's a health situation that has to do with a septic, then we can change that. But if it's new construction or something like that, it's not a priority right now. And as things die down a little bit, as far as dealing with this coronavirus, he can take plans home also. He could take plans home and work on them. But as far as going out in the field or meeting with people and so forth, or sitting down on a new plan, we don't need to do that right now. There's a lot that we could do over the phone. There's a lot that we could, he can actually have the plans dropped off at the town hall, and he can actually go and pick up those plans on Thursday or whatever it is, if they're dropped off and they're in the slot. I guess there's a slot so that they can put the plans in. So that way, he can go pick them up at his convenience and, and then work on them. And I think there's maybe other groups within the center office building that could probably do some of the same things that we're doing, as far as.
Well, Linda, that's all.
We'll get to that.
And that's something that a lot of towns have also gone to, if they haven't already just closed, they went to a 50% capacity. The state government has gone to only, from the executive branch, essential personnel only. And they name exactly who that is. That's something that you guys could discuss. I would say our recommendation.
We are gonna, aren't we gonna be? We're getting, we're getting to all those things, Linda.
I know. Well, if you're asking for, our recommendations would be to actually have as few people around. That way, most people live out of town and have to commute through other areas, and it's only going to expose them and other people to one another. So when you're talking about social distancing, if you wanna have a couple people, in my opinion, to come into the office to get out the bills for taxes, or you want them to be able to get the mail, mail's going to be an important thing, that someone is the responsible party that tells us that we got something in the mail about something, or, you know, any department. So I would say, there are certain functions that are gonna have to be done by someone, but I don't think you need full staff.
Linda.
From our recommendation, Mary.
Oh, excuse me, Linda, we're well aware of that. And Jeff is on top of it, and he does the.
I know, I know, but we're hearing different things every day, Mary. And I wanna make it clear about.
And we hear them.
The position of the Board of Health. Because, well, you weren't here, you were out of town, and there was other things being said through our office and other offices about what the policy is. We're telling you what the position of the Board of Health would be for the town. You guys could do whatever you want, but we're saying, from a safety perspective, we're telling you our feelings on this.
Yes, Linda, and you've explained it very nicely, and it's clear. But those decisions will be made with the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator, who does the day-to-day operation of the town. All the input is needed. And Jeff's had meetings, and will continue to have meetings with all the departments. We do need to get to.
We do.
The chiefs who have been patiently waiting, I think.
Well, I definitely wanna hear what they have to say, too.
Oh, no, I don't think she's moving on.
Well, if you have a short question.
Very short. I just, and I know you're not saying anything differently, but I also wanna say it for the record. I do appreciate knowing what the Board of Health's position is, because there have been different ideas and suggestions, and we haven't always all been on the same page. But I am on your page. Nonessential employees should be working remotely and not having to report. That's how I feel. But our chair is right, we are gonna take that up. But I appreciate your input.
We're doing that with our office. So like I said, you guys can deal with the other departments. It's just not necessary for everyone to be here at the same time. Stagger it, do whatever you want. Most offices throughout the country, I, I mean, I know what you guys, this is your thing. I'm just saying, if you look what everyone else is doing, and if it's working, I would say learn, you know, you can get lessons learned from other people without, you know.
Well, I think we've already demonstrated that the other day when we closed the town hall. I think we demonstrated it when Selectman Mandaling asked for this meeting. So I think as a governmental body, we're on it. So I think we are very aware of what's going on in the neighborhood, and that's why we acted as we did.
If there's any other questions or any other concerns, and we can help you guys, feel free to contact us.
I love it if you stay for the whole meeting, because something might come up. That's the whole idea, is to get everybody here. If you don't wanna stay, you don't have to.
No, 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 it's, it's fine.
I would welcome if you did stay.
But Jeff, we just have to determine what we're gonna do with the doctor on the phone.
I would keep him on the phone because he is consulting to us, quite frankly. So I think it's important for him to know what they're doing, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Guys, right, all right?
Kate, thank you.
Thanks, folks. If you wanna stay on, Dr. Faison, stay on. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna have to leave. I've got another meeting that I have to be at. It's a very similar circumstance, but it's work, work-related.
Okay. Yeah, okay, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
But we still have a court. We're good.
We have a court anyway, yeah.
We're good. Thank you. And I will watch the rest of this on TV.
Take care of yourself.
You, too.
And your mother, and.
Yeah, she's doing great.
Yeah, she's doing great.
Morning.
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 Well, how are you guys doing?
We're doing well. From the police and emergency management side, we're holding steady. We don't have any unusual or abnormal conditions. We are continuing business as normal. The officers and the emergency management coordinator are on top of everything with respect to the ongoing situation. Chief Grasso and I are in constant communication. As being in the same building, it certainly helps us out. Supply-wise, we have sufficient PPEs in each one of the cruisers, and available resources within the department to handle what is coming at us right now, and if it, if it increases any way, then we should be able to handle it. If not, we have also partnered to examine what availability, additional resources are, and where they're coming from, as well as participating in regional and statewide surveys to let people know what we'll need in the future.
Yeah, and from the fireside, we are fully prepared to respond as normal. All of our paramedics and EMTs have been trained to handle these types of situations. They're properly equipped. We continue to investigate all avenues for resupply, because the supplies are in short demand, but at this time, we are properly equipped.
And Chief Grasso put together last week an emergency medical dispatch response form that's a Q and A for our dispatchers, when we do get calls of people that are ill that are looking for ambulance services or EMS services at all, that they can ask a series of questions to try to determine the person's condition that's on the other end, to ensure that the first responders, both the EMTs, fire, and police that are responding to that particular location, will have as much information about the patient that they need upon their dispatch to that location to provide the assistance. And that's ongoing, and each one of the calls that come in, not just on 911, but in the regular business line as well, so that everyone is made aware. Again, everybody's holding steady, I know, everybody's business as usual. We've got a great crew on both sides of public safety right now. They're just handling it as it comes in, and dealing with the day-to-day business that hasn't stopped out there, so we still have a regular customer base that's continuing. Some of our outside additional operations and initiatives have ceased. We still are providing a pretty high level of competent service out there.
Yeah, and we also are partnering with the senior center. As of today, I'm sending either a paramedic or an EMT out with the senior center personnel as they deliver their meals to the folks that can't, can't come to the senior center to pick up, just to have that level of visibility and, and give that, you know, checkup, face-to-face checkup, as they do the meal delivery.
Okay, Priscilla?
To either chief, do we have any process where the seniors that may not use the senior center, or may not get meals on wheels, do we have any contact between the senior center and yourselves of those folks that somebody could just make a wellness call? I know you have, are you okay, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And I can't, I can't say with certainly, but I can only assume the quality of work that Leslie Wong's doing over at the senior center now, that she's in constant contact and, and daily contact with all, all of her seniors, and that we have such an open line of communication, that if there was someone that may be potentially in need, would be able to get in contact with her or contact us for whatever they...
Oh, I have no doubt on that piece. I, I guess, my question is, does the senior center have a list of all the seniors, or pretty much close to all in Sturbridge, that may not use the center, nor get meals on wheels?
Prior emergency preparation, we had a list of seniors that were put together, and we put them in a separate group in our code RED, which is our, our community-wide alert system, and we've already sent out one message to that group through, through that telephonic method, and letting them know what services were available through the senior center, and we were hoping that we captured a high majority of that group that you're speaking of. So, she did have a list, and we put that list into code RED, and that, and we've already sent one message out, and we'd probably be sending another message out before the end of the week, just reminding those seniors of the services that are available and who to contact if needed.
Now, I know you could use volunteers for what I'm going to ask you, because I'm not expecting personnel to take this, but that list of seniors on that code RED, and maybe what I'm asking is not real, but is there any way that volunteers or whatever could make phone calls to, a personal phone call to them to see they're okay? Sometimes seniors skeptical, afraid, don't understand it, whatever, just like a phone call to say, "Hey, you know what, you all set? Do you need anything?"
And that, and that's not a terrible idea, and maybe we could, we could pull together, again, we have Kevin Philcheck, our emergency management coordinator, who is in the EOC right now as part of his full-time responsibilities, so maybe we could pull in one or two CERT volunteers to go down that list and make those phone calls, as you suggested, and make the one-on-one contacts. I don't think that's an impossible task. I think in a community our size, it's something that we could potentially, we could probably do.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, because besides the CERT people, there are other people in town looking to volunteer, to help out anyway with the food, or I'm sure someone who probably isn't capable of doing the shopping would make phone calls.
Right, they could do that at home.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. And, and Leslie may already have a vetted list. The reason I said, just suggested CERT was because there are vetted volunteers already, and we're not going to turn away any volunteerism right now. However, we already have a volunteer corps in place that we'd like to use, and, and if we get to that point where we start to see their, their responsibilities and availability diminish, then we'll certainly look to other volunteers in the community.
I, I think it's also important to note, we're talking about information sharing, both departments are actively using their social media to push out messages and information that we have available, that we're getting from different, different sources, to keep everybody as informed as possible.
And, and the town administrator's been great about keeping us all together, and keeping us in constant contact with one another, so all of our messages are being shared throughout the, the town government, so I don't think that there's any hiccups there at all.
Yeah, no, I assume that, having read things that, and of course, that is Jeff's job, and he's been doing it well, so... Okay, questions, Mary?
I have another practical question, just because, and I know the ambulance system in our town is phenomenal. We've really, I don't think, ever gotten complaints with how quickly you respond to emergencies, even before you were here, Chief Grasso. But, the question has come up with a few people, and if you do respond to somebody who is exhibiting flu-like symptoms consistent with COVID-19, you have the protective gear for your EMCs?
Correct.
Okay, because I know, you know, it was on the news that somebody, I don't know if they didn't share what their symptoms were, but the EMCs ended up testing positive. I'm sure we've all watched the news as well. But my question is, after that, just explain what your procedure is in terms of cleaning and disinfecting that ambulance when you're reporting to another emergency after with the same vehicle, because, you know, residents are concerned with that as well.
Right, so we currently have three ambulances that we can use to respond to emergencies. Two of them are staffed full-time, the third is kept in reserve. If we go to an incident where we suspect that a patient might have been infected, that ambulance is taken out of service along with that crew, until both the crew and the ambulance can be completely sanitized. In that instance, the second ambulance that is fully staffed will respond to the next emergency, and we will use callback to staff the third ambulance, if needed, for a simultaneous call. But that first ambulance that, that transported the questionable patient will be taken out of service until it's completely sanitized.
Okay, I'm sure a lot of residents are, were happy to hear that. And then my other follow-up question is there, are there federal and state guidelines in terms of what, and I don't disbelieve that you will be very vigilant, but are there certain regulations in place that dictate what you need to do to make, ensure that that ambulance is clean and, and ready to go to the next emergency?
Sure, and, and of course, this is as fluid as everything else that's going on in, in the situation. So, we're following the CDC guidelines and any other guidelines that come to us, either from state DPH, local DPH, or the Office of Emergency Medical Services.
Okay, and they have delineated exactly what to do?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, anything else from the board?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. I don't know if she's staying, he's staying on, but... Doctor, thank you for, for contributing to our meeting. I know we, we really liked having you here, and I assume you're a regular resource to our, our board, is that how that works? You're assigned to us, or?
We, we volunteer to us.
Oh, you volunteer to us, thank you.
He lives in town.
Oh, okay, awesome.
Yes, I, in fact, I could, could say, my way of background, we lived in Sturbridge for 40 years, but mainly in the summer, but now we're living here full-time. But previously, I was chairman of the Board of Health in South Grove for 12 years, so before moving here to Sturbridge, so I have quite a bit of experience, and I will be available as needed for anybody in town, I think, I mean, any officials in town directly, and I could resign to patients if you wish, but we'd have to discuss that further, but I'm certainly pretty official in town. I would please to hear the fire chiefs and police chiefs, I think they are fairly doing, following just exactly the way they should. They seem to have the equipment they need. I think right now, we're in good hands with the situation at hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Doctor. I didn't realize that you're a resident as well, so that's excellent.
No, not for the doctor. Thanks, Dr. Faison, I'll talk to you later.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
God bless.
Bye.
Right now is the weekly conference call for municipal officials on this issue. If you want to listen while you're here, we can turn it on or continue the meeting. It's the DPH, MEMA COVID-19 Conference Call for Municipalities. It started at 10:00. If you want to listen...
Do we listen to it? Do we have to, or, I don't, I don't know?
I mean, I'm sure I'll get guidance after it, and that I can share?
I think that's sufficient, personally, I think that's...
I believe Kevin's on the line with it right now.
Okay, so we'll get a report?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, good. That's good.
Okay, Jeff?
Couple of action items. Well, we, there was a conversation about three hours, because we're not going to 7:00 on Tuesday, that issue is unresolved on what to do with the three hours for the hourly employees. I would like you to adopt the virtual meeting policy, although it's posted, we should have it adopted, because it does take some different policy actions, and again, this is temporary. At some point, we'll bring to you a policy. I'm under the understanding that remote meetings haven't been supported in the past, but maybe that's something you want to revisit, and I'll bring that to you. And I would also ask that you extend the closure of town hall till April 7th. That'll put us after your next meeting. That way, if you want to continue that, we'll decide on the 6th whether to go forward on the 7th with opening the buildings.
Didn't we, didn't we put it to a better date the other day?
I think we put it till April 6th.
It was April 6th, consistent.
Oh, you want to just go one more day?
Yeah, because your meeting is the evening of the 6th.
That's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, just one more day. So, I'd ask you to consider those three items, please.
Okay, do you want to make a motion first on extending...
I will. I'll make a motion to extend the closure of the town hall to the public until April 7th.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
I'll have that as an action item on your agenda for consideration, to extend or just let it go and reopen.
We'll know more by then.
I pray we do.
I do, too.
Okay. Now, adoption of the virtual meetings with the correction of 25 people to 10 people. Sixth line down.
Yeah, so, make a motion that we accept that change in the number of people to 10, effective immediately.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Just so you, if I could?
Yes.
All right, so we've set up, of course, this meeting room is live. COB has some audio issues that we have to work out, so all the meetings will be here for now in this room. We have set up the capability where through our phone system, we could have 100 people dial in to listen to a teleconference, and we've also set up what's called GoToMeeting, which has a greater range. However, if there's a huge issue, we're going to max out on who can participate electronically. So, there's going to be, you know, and the policy addresses that, if there's, for whatever reason, the technology doesn't allow you to participate, but it's mostly for public hearings, and we'll make sure the, because we have to post the instructions for the remote meetings, so those instructions will also include, if you have questions, you can email them to a point, or those kind of things. So, we're still fleshing all that out, but by the time we convene on the 6th, this should be ready to go.
Okay, and the third?
Yeah.
Linda?
No, I've spoken to Ken about the telephony and...
I just want to make sure that, yeah, that we understand what the rules are for this stuff.
Okay, yeah.
No problem. Okay. And apparently, there was discussion about the three-hour per week on the hourly workers.
We left it unresolved whether or not, since we're closing early on the 4th, or on the Tuesday at 4:00 PM and not working till 4:00 on Friday, that the hourly employees would be shorted three hours of pay. That needs to be resolved.
Can I?
Go ahead.
I'm going to just give my opinion. I think until April 7th, I personally feel that they should just be paid like a normal week, and I, I would keep the, keep those hours closed on, closed early on Tuesday, and Friday stays as is, because I don't think we need more people crossing each other and, coming into the town hall, or they can be reached at least until Friday. I think that everybody is going to hurt financially, everyone is, and sometimes when it's only three hours, you can't collect sometimes. I know they're changing all those rules, I get that, but sometimes their income is just puts them just over the cusp. I think for three weeks, and then we can figure out with guidance from financial folks what to do if we need to extend it. We're very fortunate that we do have free cash. I know I was talking to Selectman Dowling the other day. We, we're fortunate, we have free cash that we can possibly get us through those three weeks. For now, I would just like to leave them as paid as they are.
We do, oh, go ahead, Mary.
No. Because we, you haven't, you sure? I was going to say that I share Priscilla's view on this, and we did talk about free cash, and then after I thought about it, they're already in the budget for getting the amount of money they're supposed to anyway.
I didn't even think of that.
I didn't neither at the time, and I am, I'm strongly in favor of just paying them, but I also, well, we'll move on to, to the next topic at the next time, but as far as the three hours go, that's my position, too.
Of course, it works out to more than three hours, because it's what, three weeks?
Three weeks.
Well, it's three hours a week.
Yeah, so, three times three is nine.
Be nine hours.
I'm, I don't think I'm quite that magnanimous. There are a lot of people, not just in Sturbridge, but in every city, every town, that they're not working, therefore, they're not getting paid. You know, it hurts, but it takes a sacrifice. How many hourly people will we be talking?
A handful, because we're only talking about COB...
In town hall.
Town hall, and then a couple, because we'll get into the next conversation about, and I don't want to call anybody nonessential, because I really don't believe there's anybody that works for the town that's not essential, but maybe not frontline people. We'll get into that conversation, but there's a handful. If I could ask for a compromise to this, on Tuesday after 4:00, you can either continue to work, and then we'll get into another conversation in a minute, till 7:00, or be available between 4:00 and 7:00 to answer your cell phone. You've got to be on call. And that way, at least if we need you to do something, you're available to do something.
Madam Chair? Instead of going, instead of going from Thursday to Monday?
What do you mean, Thursday and Monday?
Well, I mean, if they're not working Friday.
Well, it's Friday till noon, but if we're cutting off at 4:00, again, that's where your three-hour...
Comes in.
Comes in. It was just an idea for a compromise, at least be on call.
I agree with the compromise. I think it's a fine compromise, if they're willing to be available at home by cell phone if somebody should need something. I don't have an issue with that because it's not encumbering them in a big day. I do know that there are people all around the country that are unemployed. I get that. However, in my feeling, sometimes charity begins at home. And we ask our residents, our, I'm sorry, our employees to step up to a lot of situations. We've asked them in the past for different situations. And I think the times being what they are, I just think that if we can show some sense of compassion for three weeks, I'm not asking this to be for the rest of the year. God forbid that we have to face that question. That's a whole other issue. I'm asking for consideration, empathy to our employee, our hourly employees just for three weeks. And I don't think that, I mean, many companies have stepped up and have, are paying their employees for at least the shutdown period and then they will deal with it later. And some of them are small companies. And I think we're very fortunate in Sturbridge. We do have an abundance of free cash. And we, and I know Selectmen Dowling has always said, can we bring it to the minimum so that we can help more people? The people we need to help are those who are working for us. And I stand firm and I will go so far as to make a motion to that effect when the, when the time is right.
Mary?
Okay. Yeah. Here's where I'm coming from. I feel like our federal government is doing what they can now, even in a bipartisan way, which is pretty hopeful to, I mean, we're even talking about uniform, uh, this, uh, universal income, where people are getting a thousand dollars. Our state government is doing what they can. We're only able to help our own local government, but I think we should follow the example that's getting set. It's money that's already in our budget. And during these times, I, I, I feel, I will go for the compromise, but I am even okay with just paying their normal salary consistent with our fiscal year twenty budget. That's the, what we can do at the municipal level to soften the blow. And I agree. I mean, there's businesses that they're still paying their employees because it's not their fault. They can't go into work. I, you know, in terms of being open till seven, my own, available till seven, I get that's a good compromise. But I thought, and maybe you can correct me, Linda, but I thought I heard the latest on the news when I was flipping through that Charlie Baker closed daycare centers.
He did.
Except the essential.
Essential personnel.
He's got some kind of.
Health workers and stuff.
Okay. So now we have that added, that added complication that, you know, we're asking people to work till seven at night during, you know, when now they get their kids home too. I don't know. I.
I mean, I'm okay either way, Mary. I'm okay either way.
If I could. And I think this flows into the next conversation about who goes home, who stays here, those kind of things. The reality is we may have some people that want to continue to come to work. We have payroll to get out. We have vendor payments to make. We have mail to pick up. We do have some inspections that cannot wait, but we also have the capability of having people work from home. I think what I'm looking for is the discretion to allow those that still want to come to work to work. Those that want to work from home can. We have some technology that we can deploy. And that fits into, if you want to go home at four on a Tuesday, just make sure you're available in case we need something from you. Same with, if you're working from home, the expectation is you're working from home. And I had that conversation with the department heads yesterday. I want a product. I want departments to produce something during that time. So all that kind of fits together in making sure no one misses out on their normal compensation. And that's kind of where I'm at as a manager. Give us the discretion. We'll manage the situation. We want people to be comfortable, but we also have that balance between supporting the police, fire, DPW, and those still in the field, supporting the people that supply us goods and services because they need to be paid too. We're already constricting money in the marketplace. We want to make sure our bills get paid in a timely fashion, not to create more of a problem. We have people that want to do projects that they've not had time to do. This is a perfect opportunity, but we also have people that are either caring for children at home and can work from home or don't feel comfortable coming to work and those can be accommodated. So I think, given that global picture, I think allowing the administrator have that discretion is my recommendation and request.
Okay. Priscilla?
I, I, I don't think you're unreasonable at all. I honestly don't. And I think you've opened the door like to, if, but let me ask, or let me go to this. If somebody wants to work, I would never say no. If they feel, you know, it's quiet, I can get a lot done. Absolutely. But the one, the, the person on the hourly that can't do that for whatever reason is afraid to be here or is afraid to come in contact, they shouldn't be penalized.
I agree.
That's all I'm saying. I guess I can agree with your situat, I totally, I have no issue with what you just said. I think it's good. I just want to give that person that's hourly and maybe can't do anything remotely from home because they may not have the ability, they may not have the skill, whatever their position is, and I don't know. So I'm just generically saying that. But they're not, they're not penalized with no income.
But are we now talking about?
Talking two different.
Well.
We got to, yeah, we got.
Let me finish.
Hours first and then we'll move on.
Because we're dealing with two buildings now. What about, I mean, there's still an expectation, DPW is still out in the field. Health Department can't close down. So there's a certain, there's thresholds here we have to think about. I'm okay with the office in what I call nonessential or less than essential or whatever we want to call them. But once we start getting into the broader picture, I think response times and service deliveries and equity, because we have police and firefighters that have to put in forty hours a week to get forty hours of pay, right? So I think there's a balance here that we have to consider as well.
But police and fire are essential personnel, aren't they not?
I understand. I understand.
That's a different, they come under a different category.
I know, but.
Yeah, but.
Go ahead.
But they still have to work forty hours to get forty hours of pay. What I'm saying is we can ma, wait a minute. We can have people work remotely and still work.
Right.
Right. And still get paid. So that's all I'm saying is give us that discretion.
Well, let's go to the compromise, the first compromise. If you're willing to make that motion, I can support it.
The one for Tuesday night? The one with being available?
Yeah. Yeah. Being available.
Can I just?
You want to do it during discussion?
I just want to weigh, I just want to weigh in on one thing because I know we're talking about two different things and we'll definitely move on. I just want to comment on a couple of things. You know, the term essential, nonessential, these are like universal terms that are being used at the federal level. Supreme Court put off their oral arguments for the first time since nineteen eighteen. We are not all essential employees in the town of Sturbridge if the federal and state government know that all their employees are not essential. They're closing businesses unless, you know, in some states, unless you are working towards the goal or Department of Defense and stuff. So I agree with that kind of, I don't, I guess I'm not on the same page to think, you know, we're all essential. You know, we're not. So, and I had sent an email wanting to know like exactly how much this was going to cost us, but.
I have to.
Okay. But, but the more I think about it, I know that's a compromise, but I really don't, I'm just simply going to alleviate, my vote is going to be four o'clock, they go home. Because business as usual, you know, people are under a tremendous amount of stress right now and I don't want them to feel like they have to work until seven o'clock over the next three weeks. The experts are saying hunker down, stay home to the extent you can, that, you know, some of them will have children running around. I just, I just feel it is a very small amount of money and I think I would pay them. That's how I feel about that. The nonessential employees should work from home. And if they can't work from home because they're hourly and it's such that, and I can't think of specific examples. I don't know the intricacies of the town the way others do. They can't work. It's as simple as that. And personally, it's in the budget for the next three weeks that they're all saying is critical to flatten that bell curve. I am comfortable at our municipal level to pay them in our budget, just like we have. And I, I know, understand that may not be the position of everybody, but, and then in the future, if this continues, while they've already alleviated the waiting period for unemployment, then we can get into that next level. But during this interim, uh, they could, they're available to work so they don't feel, fall squarely within the motion we already made that they won't have to use their sick time. They're not sick. They don't have symptoms, but they also can't come to, you know, they don't have anything to do. I, I would, I would leave them home. And, and the other thing with the, leave it up to Jeff's discretion, except I don't want employees to feel pressured that the preference is come in, but if you want to stay home, you can, but I prefer it if you're in.
Well, actually, it's been the opposite. I've said if you don't feel comfortable coming to work, stay home.
Okay. But the flip.
It's been the opposite message.
Okay. As long as that is the message. But again, our experts are saying, you know, limit the amount of people that you're around over the next few weeks. And I'm not sure that's limiting the amount of people. If Barbara has to come in to, to do something for a couple hours, that's one thing, but I don't think that people should, even if they've got projects to do, I don't think they should be staying in the Town Hall for their full eight hour day. I don't think that's honoring the intent of the experts where they say hunker down and stay home.
And I don't think, and I don't think that was the intent. I don't believe, even if you choose to come to work, it may not be every day. It may not be forty hours a week or thirty-five hours a week. What I'm saying is at the end of the day, when all this is over.
Right.
I expect weekly progress reports. We're going to have daily call-ins with the departments. We're going to have certain thresholds and I want a product produced from everybody. And there are certain public business that has to take place. So this is kind of, you're working, keep producing product, but I'm not counting hours, right? That's where we are.
Okay. And then they, excellent. I like that. But the other thing I wanted to add is, because I know you've, you've said this, inspect, there are inspections and permits that have to be done in the next three weeks. I guess, A, what are they? Because B, I, I have a hard time believing that there's any emergency permits. Mayor Walsh closed down all building in the city of Boston. He just cold turkey. Do you know how many building permits and inspections he stopped? And so I wonder, in our town, are these permits that have to be, that have to be conducted? Because again, they're saying hunker down, limit the amount of people you're with, stay in your own pod. And I don't think doing inspections and permits per se is honoring the spirit and intent of what the experts are saying.
So this is the message that I've had the conversation with the building official and he seems to be, this is where he is too. If an inspection or permit can be delayed, it's being delayed. If it can't, for whatever reason, because there's a myriad of these things that have to take place, if he does not feel comfortable doing it, he won't do it. And I'm fully in support of that. If there's alternate means to do the inspection, i.e. an engineer signs off that the work was done in accordance to the building code, right? If he can get photographs from the contractor that signs off on that particular piece of inspection, he will do that. Can we, if it's a new construction, is the building otherwise empty? Does he wear P. P.? All these things, because there are impacts to these people. And now if the Board of Selectmen want to vote to shut down all building activity in town, that's fine. But if the contractors go forward without inspections, the building official can't give a certificate of occupancy when it's all said and done. We have to find a balance. Either shut them all down or allow in, using his discretion and his best judgment to do inspections how and when necessary. Same with the fire department. They've got inspections that they have to do. They have to balance these responsibilities. For instance, if your electric system in your house shuts down and you get no electric heat or you can't get hot water.
That's very different.
Well, these are, these are permits and inspections. Same with a hot water heater. If your hot water heater fails, if your roof has a problem, if all these, these are discre, these are things that we have as professionals to use our discretion.
I, I'm going to have to, at this point, respectfully disagree with some of the examples. I just.
Well, Mary, take, take for an example.
You got hot heat. That, that is, that is very different. But leaving Nelson the discretion to have this signed off and he's going here and he's going there, you know, and I know we're, it's probably time to move on because we have different philosophies. You know, inspecting new construction on a house or, or a restaurant? I'm sorry. Not, not an emergency, not the type of thing that the government is contemplating.
And that's not what I said. I said if it can be delayed.
But what can't, what new construction can't be delayed?
I don't, I don't know off the top of my head, but that's why I'm saying leave it to the building officials' discretion. If he can push it off, I've told him. If you can push something off, push it off. There's no interest here.
He is okay with that.
Right.
Can I?
Yeah. Wait a minute. I just want to say on, you know, inspections too, Mary, if there was a fire with the house, it has to be inspected to see if it's livable or it has to be torn down and everything. But I do think that Nelson's got the knowledge to know which inspections need to be done and which don't.
And I'm not going to order it. And I will never order him to do something he's not comfortable with.
He's not. And then what about the people at the other end? You know, I think that we've kind of exhausted this. I am, I am not in favor in the next few weeks of, of inspections and permits going forward.
That's a different discussion.
Yeah. That's a different discussion. Yeah.
Can I ask a question though of the town administrator? Let me ask you. I know you said about the three hours being available by phone. Is there any hourly employee that anybody would reach out to in any emergency?
It depends.
In the Town Hall?
It depends on whether or not the department head is available and they, we believe they would have the information. It's all situational. All of this is.
Situational. Okay. So I can then, I'm going to try for a motion and you can help me guide it. Okay. I make a motion that all hourly employees receive, receive normal compensation through April 7th. If there is an hourly employee that is willing and able to, and willing and able to give their cell phone to be reached in an emergency on Tuesday evening, I have no problem with that. I, I can, you can include that. It's, it's, I don't know how you want to word this because I would leave it to the discretion of the employee if they're comfortable and willing to do it, but if they're not comfortable or willing, they still get paid.
So you're saying basically kind of volunteer your services.
Volunteer your services, pretty much.
On call if.
Yeah. Whatever you want to say it.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion? I would imagine they would volunteer after all they're, they're getting paid.
I don't know. It's up to our chair if she recognizes you or whatever.
No.
No.
Not on this.
It's government stuff.
Yeah.
It's government stuff.
Okay. Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Jane, can I just ask a question of Linda? Just to help, I'm not going to ask for her opinion, I just want to know what they're hoping.
Well, if it's a short question and a short answer.
Just tell me, the, and I know, I'm not saying you're going to do this, but what is the Board of Health's authority in terms of, because I know they shut down schools before the school, in other towns, the Board of Health has shut down the school even before the superintendent. Does the Board of Health, just kind of a quick question, yes or no, would they have the authority to say, you know, everything's closed?
Yes.
Okay. I just, I had read that, but I just wanted to know what.
If y'all want to get paid, I wouldn't do that.
I'm not, that wasn't my question, I just wanted to know what the authority of the Board of Health was.
Especially under a state emergency.
Yeah, that, okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Okay, now, what's the third thing we didn't vote on?
I think that was it. Now we're talking about essential, non-essential. The non, the non-essential employees, we added up, it's about $18,000 a week if we send them home. Well, we, the payroll for non-essential employees is about $18,000 a week.
And this includes, because the conversation came up when I spoke with Becky at the, she was actually, had a lot of forethought, because I spoke with her a couple of weeks ago, and she was asking, you know, in the event we, our library closes, and I have a lot of part-time hourly employees.
I'd have to ask Barbara, I don't think we included the library in that. I think these were town employees under the jurisdiction of the town Board of Selectmen.
They have a.
They have their own elected board.
Their trustees can do it.
Yeah.
Right, but she.
And that's where we've been with the library.
Yeah.
Their board has to decide what they do.
And, because she was, then we had some confusion on this, because she wanted to know what was our position on, you know, what about hourly employees, will they get paid?
We didn't have a position, yeah.
That is totally up to the trustees?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Same with their closures.
Same thing with her salary, too.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we never have any input in that.
And does this include any, this includes the senior center, whoever?
No, you, the Council on Aging is advisory.
Yeah.
No, I know, but that, does that figure include them?
Yes.
Okay.
It includes a couple at, or three at Public Safety, I think. So I still go back to the original question, leave it to our discretion with favoring staying home. I guess I'll put it that way.
Yeah.
Well, seeing as we're not all, we don't know the job of everyone and what's, you know, considered essential and what's considered less essential, I certainly think at the discretion of the person who does the day-to-day management of the town, I think that's the one that should make the decision. Priscilla?
As long, yeah, as long as, as long as employees feel comfortable to say that I'm not comfortable being in the building.
Absolutely.
You know, then, that, respect that, and give them every opportunity to work remotely. And if they, if they can't, we find another, our, our full-time employees probably can easier than others. But some may like, as you said before, they can get so much done now because the public's not in their face all day long, and, and it makes it easier when, when that's the case. But, and I'm sure most of them wouldn't mind being here because of that, because there's less to no contact.
Right.
Yeah. And even in this building, the contact, well, particularly on the top floor, I mean.
Very little.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So do you want a motion, or?
I think, I think it's within my authority.
Yep. And I, yep, and this isn't personal, but I would, I would send non-essential employees home and not give that much leeway, because we don't even, and I know this isn't going to fly, so we would need to move on, because I don't think we're all even on the same page as to what we consider essential and not essential, and what we consider essential work and not essential work.
Well, that's what I said, we're not, we don't have the expertise to make that decision.
Well, some things, even, even listening, I don't think we're on the same page as to what, if you were to give a description of something, I don't think we're all on the same page as what we consider essential and not. So I'm just going to respectfully not agree on this one, but I know you've got the, because we already went back and forth about permits, and I'm, Nelson to have the discretion, I mean, if the city of Boston can shut down for two weeks, so can Sturbridge. And I just feel like, at least up until last week, it was almost business as usual, and I didn't think that was a good approach. I, I felt very much that it was business as usual, even when I spoke with some staff. And so I don't think it should be business as usual. It's extraordinary circumstances, and I don't think that hourly employees, you know, stay home is, is my point for hourly employees, non-essential, and get paid. The staff, report to those who, it's very simple, if you can work from home, I think it's great, you report in, there's conference calls, but other than that, you're home. And I, I would not leave it up to the discretion of individual employees, including Nelson. So I don't think we're all going to convince each other, so I'm just going to, I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. So Jeff?
I understand. And believe me, it's not business as usual in any way, shape, or form.
Okay, so are we done?
I, I have no more for the board.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn then?
Okay, so let me, before we go there, our next meeting is April 6th, correct?
That's correct.
And it will be here.
That's correct.
Will we be able at that time to do the evaluation, or does it have to be on hold?
Um.
Because of the situation, primarily.
Well, they should all be done.
Okay. I'm okay, I already gave you mine, so I'm not looking for time.
Yeah, you know, and I'll just get it to you, it's.
Yeah, okay, whatever.
Because it's three weeks, you know.
And I know I brought this up the other day, but for the general public, I know we talked about the election the other day, and according to what we've been told, our town clerk feels that there's no problem at this point in time to change anything. Is that still correct?
That is still correct as of this morning.
Okay, all right.
Okay, motion to adjourn, so move.
Can I just make one request?
Sure.
Just because I'm, you know, we're all, I'm not confused, but if I can just have in, in writing basically what you, what did, you know, what is the staff's directive, just so I know too?
Sure.
You know, where you said they're encouraged to stay home, just kind of in writing, so we, so I know, you know, and leave it to the discretion, you could just put it down as, as your policy, so I'm aware of it.
That's fine. You'll have it by Monday.
Awesome.
And now, before we adjourn, I just want to thank the facilities coordinator for disinfecting our, disinfecting every time we have a meeting, disinfecting everything, and being very sensitive to all that, and I want to say thank you.
Yes, Robin. It was not in the job description.
Robin's done a fantastic job, her crew have gone over and above, and she will continue.
Yeah.
So, yes.
Oh, and before your motion, the playground, you said put locks on them.
On the courts, they were out yesterday. The Recreation Board decided to close the courts last night, so they're locking them today.
Good.
Okay.
Good.
So now people will just be meeting at Turner's Field and.
You know, people are social creatures.
End Street Road, too.
Robin.
Robin?
I have a, I have a question. With regards to recreation, closing the facilities, are, are we asking on our patrols if things are happening, or are they stopping and checking on those places or locations, or would we like our community to assist in letting us know of public gatherings?
Oh, good one.
Can I have another?
Well, people have been putting things on Facebook about certain gatherings.
They have.
You read the same one. But in their patrols, though, you go by those areas, right?
Yes.
So.
Yeah.
Mary, I've got one more thing. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, it pertains to this, because it's a conversation Linda and I had, and I know you said, and heaven forbid, I don't wish anybody gets sick, or has a family member that gets sick, but I know in our conversation, you said that you thought we should have some kind of a plan in place.
Oh, a co-plan.
In the event, you know, if our town administrator, you know, because he's in charge.
I think you guys have a co-plan.
Um, who, you know, should we, should we decide now, like, who we would want as the acting interim?
You guys have a co-plan.
No, well, we don't. We, we do it on a case-by-case basis.
Well, how about if we ask the town administrator for recommendations and not have, that, and just a thought, if you don't like it, I'm okay with that too. A recommendation from you that if, and if I'm ill for any period of time, I recommend A, B, or C.
And then we usually vote on it.
And we can pick from that, and if we don't, and, but that person doesn't know, that's private to you and to us privately.
President, ill can we have incapacitated?
Okay, yeah.
Unavailable.
Yeah, because you could have a cold and be out for a day. Yeah, incapacitated, totally, yeah.
Or, you know, for, yeah, unable to come to work.
For a period of time.
And then we usually, you know, it's the same thing as if you went on vacation, we usually make a vote, and I.
No, I think that's a great idea, Mary.
I don't know if you have someone in mind, we could just vote right now. If you don't, then, I'm not going to put you on the spot.
We should maybe have a list, because the second person may be incapacitated.